Good evening, everyone. We are here for the March 30th, 2023 meeting of the zoning board of appeals. Before us this evening is a continued application by Mr. John Sevigny. And that is the only substantive matter that we have before us. We'll be doing our minutes, reviewing them from the last meeting. And we have some other procedural business. But as far as applications go, that's the only one we have before us. And I will just reprise where we are because, as I said, this is a continuation of this matter. Last time around, we heard from Mr. Sevigny, who is the applicant. We heard from Representative Mr. McCall, Attorney McCall, on behalf of the code office. We heard from Attorney Williams, I believe he's here as well. From the developer, I'm sure I'm going to get the entity wrong, but Centauri, I think it is. Is that correct? You'll correct me if I'm wrong?
Centauri Group.
Centauri Group, thank you. And we heard from members of the public as well. And that, after that, we closed the public hearing. And at this point, I should also introduce my fellow board members. We have Mr. Stephen Stares is here, Mr. Wayne Berry. And we are also joined by counsel for the board, Mr. Attorney Jim Katsifakis. And so I think I'm going to sort of look to counsel just to make sure I am speaking properly as to where we are procedurally. We closed the public hearing. At this point, my understanding is that we should be conducting our deliberations.
That's correct. You're in the deliberation mode, and that means that parties may...
I think you need your mic on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
There you go.
The board is in a deliberation mode, so the public doesn't have a general right to speak. But...
We'll be able to answer questions from the board. So if anyone has questions, you can certainly talk. But the public hearing is closed at this stage. I did prepare a draft decision based upon where the board seemed to be going. And I've sent that out to try to assist the board in coming to conclusions.
Okay. And I have, my face is a bit red here because I don't think I have seen those. Have those been circulated, Karen?
They were. You thought you did not see those.
No. Did you, Wayne, see them? The draft findings?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, so what...
I have an extra copy.
That would be wonderful. Thank you so much. And Stephen, did you? You saw them? You haven't. Okay, so we'll look at these, but...
Yeah, there's a link on the agenda. We have that up, but I didn't...
I do, actually. Yeah. I see it now. Okay, I apologize. So what, I don't think it is efficient or necessary for us to actually read them out. I know some boards do that. I don't think that that is necessarily a good use of our time. What we could possibly do, and I'm looking to my fellow board members, is perhaps take just a five to 10-minute recess that we can review those. But before I do, I wanted to ask counsel who's here and Representative, the applicant, did you have an opportunity to review those findings? Okay. And I just want to make sure that if there's any, I understand that people aren't necessarily going to agree with the contents, but if there's any procedural issues that you want to raise, not at this moment, but can you kind of tell me if there's anything procedurally? Okay. So not at this moment, but just give us a minute from, just for one second. And just again, to reprise, I just want to make sure for folks who are listening, if they weren't listening in last time around, just to give a very thumbnail sketch of what this appeal involved. And I'm basically, these are not my own words, I'm summarizing from the application itself. Basically, we are dealing with an administrative appeal of the code enforcement offices, excuse me, granting of an occupancy permit, or occupancy permits, to 17 and 21 Longwood Drive. The basis, again, there was much testimony and submissions on this, but to reduce it down to its essence, the basis for the appeal is that there is water runoff from those properties onto Mr. Sevigny's property, that there were not enough trees planted. I gather there had been some removal of trees, that this was considered a violation by the town, and that the mitigation of that tree removal was not appropriate. And the third allegation was that there was an exterior set of stairs that don't meet code because a handrail was not installed. And so that's, that's the essence of it. And if I would entertain a motion to take a 10-minute recess, or however long we need just to review those findings, is that something?
So moved.
Okay. And so we're going to do that. We're going to be in recess for about 10 minutes. And I'm not sure if we need to keep the technology live, or if we could put up a blue screen, but that would be great. Thank you. So we have all had the opportunity to review the draft findings submitted by counsel. And at this point, I think what's important for us to do is to go through, from a general perspective, with respect to each and every one of the grounds of appeal, and talk about what our conclusions are, and if we are on the same page, literally, with those draft findings that have been presented to us. So, again, before we go into our deliberation, I had asked counsel for the parties, and parties in interest, if they had any issues procedurally, not as to content or substance because these are our findings, but I want to know procedurally if there are any concerns. And so, Mr. McCall, do you have any? Mr. Williams? Okay. And I know, Mr. Sevigny, when I asked that question originally, you had raised your hand. So I would ask you to limit your comments not so much to the factual findings, because again, that's our job, but if there's any procedural concerns that you have, I'd appreciate hearing from you. If you could come to the podium, thank you.
Is it us?
What's that?
Is this it? Is it elbow here?
I believe so, yeah. Thank you.
Here we go. So mine might not be as procedural. It might be more of what was put in the facts and findings that is not true, and it being sent out as fact.
Mm-hmm.
So if that's procedural, then...
It is not. And I'll, just from a very sort of basic standpoint, each party has had the opportunity to make their submissions both factual and legal. And it is our board as finders of fact, and also, you know, the point of this is to make findings of fact and conclusions. And so we have heard everything that everyone has had to say, and we closed the public hearing. And so at this point, it's up to us to basically digest everything that we've heard and make determinations on that. So I understand very much so that you will have a conflicting or opposing view as to some of our findings, but I just want to make sure that procedurally, that there's no concern.
Yeah. It's not my view of the findings, it's what the facts are and what's put on this paper.
Okay.
So if it's written as a fact and it's not a fact, is that okay?
Well, what I am just trying to impress upon you is that it's this board's job to find the facts. They're called findings of fact, right? And that is our job to find what the facts are. You may disagree with that, and that's why there's a right of appeal in that regard. But at this point, the public hearing is closed as to submission of fact. So if there's no procedural concerns, I understand you may disagree with these findings, but as far as that goes, that part of the proceedings is over.
So you said I could appeal if the findings and facts are incorrect?
Or you find them to be, or you believe them to be incorrect, certainly you'll have a right to appeal, which the appeal notice on every finding of fact and conclusion is at the bottom, and it talks about your appeal rights there. But we haven't made a conclusion yet. We're still just discussing.
Yeah. I was just surprised that things were written down as findings and facts, because I'm on the ZBA, as you know, and I've seen many findings and facts. And typically, they're all facts. And this one actually is, there's three or four of them that are not facts at all.
Okay. So if you, and again, we are still in deliberation phase, we have not made any findings or facts. We're considering this draft right now. But if you have a concern or you disagree, then absolutely, your appeal rights will be outlined in whatever document you ended up receiving from us.
Okay.
Okay? Thanks. Okay. So we have our draft findings. As you can see, the background information is provided, and that is logistics, like name of the applicant, the property at issue, the map and lot. Does anybody have any concerns about how they are drafted? I think, Mr. Stares, as you always have your eagle eyes, you noticed something that was perhaps factually incorrect.
Just a brief question for you, Mr. Paul. The application refers to map 39, lots 62 and 63, but I'm looking at the certificates of occupancy and the building permits, and they seem to refer to lots 42 and 63 on map 39. So can you, I don't want to put you on the spot, but can you tell us, is it lot 42 or is it lot 62?
I'm not sure Brian has that in front of him, but according to our tax map and GIS software, yes, you are correct. It is map 42.
Okay.
Lot 42.
Lot 42, map 39.
Lot 39.
You got it.
So as we go through these, I note that that's referenced, I think, in the background information at 1E and also in findings of fact, paragraph 1. So can we just make sure that those are amended accordingly? Great. Okay. So any other concerns with respect to the background information? Right. Yeah, definitely, we'll get to that. So now we are looking at the hearing and decision. The first few paragraphs simply state who is here. I don't think that there's, at least I don't have any concerns around that. Fellow board members, do you have anything in that regard? Okay. So now we're getting into the findings. And first paragraph...
Excuse me.
Oh, yes.
Just a very simple change was that the draft findings do reference that tonight's meeting is conducted as a hybrid meeting. It is in fact not a hybrid.
Thank you.
So if you're okay with that?
Yes, indeed, please. Yep. Perfect. Again, the first findings of fact with respect to, just recitals as to ownership of the property, that looks fine to me. Any concerns from my, aside from that amendment that we just discussed about the tax map and lot? Any other concerns in that regard?
No.
Nope. How about, again, same thing, paragraph 2 is just the location and the district in which it's located. I think that's fine. Paragraph 3, this basically talks about the finding of fact and the planning board that required a grading and drainage plan. I know that Mr. Sevigny's concern was that he felt that that drainage plan was not sufficient, that that was not sufficient to, basically, the condition was not met, and therefore the condition of, excuse me, the certificate of occupancy should not have been issued. But do you have any concern around the recitation around that grading and drainage plan? That's factually accurate? Yes? We're good? Okay. Moving on. Why don't we just, I'm trying to abbreviate this, and I'm looking at counsel, is it okay if I just ask my fellow board members if they have any issues with respect to the findings themselves?
That's fine, and then...
I think the conclusions are something...
That would be fine, and what you might do is take a vote just on the find, all the findings together if no one has any issues, or if they have any issues with those changes.
That makes sense. And from my perspective, I think really what we should be really deliberating more substantively on is the legal conclusions with respect to those...
Correct.
...factual findings. Okay.
We can't hear the findings of facts.
There, did you not have a chance to look at them yourself?
I did. I made comments to the board of ones that were completely false.
So when you said you made comments to the board, I'm not sure...
I made comments to Karen to check with the attorney and say, you know, and this was weeks ago, you know, there are facts, findings and facts that are not...
We can't hear you, sorry.
So I emailed Karen a couple of weeks ago. Whenever you sent this out, I reviewed it and found that there were blatant errors all through this. I emailed her to check with the attorney and say, you know, how can we possibly put this in front of the ZBA when the findings and facts have blatant errors? And it's not my view, it's not my opinion.
Okay.
It's just reality.
So, Mr. Sevigny, I hear what you're saying. And so what I'm going to do is I'm going to ask the attorneys who is here to advise us, because he is our counsel, and I would defer to him, and if you could answer that question, I would appreciate that.
If there's a blatant error, I wouldn't want to see it in the, in the decision. So I think the board is free to ask what those blatant errors are and address them.
Fair enough. So if, if, what I would ask you to do, Mr. Sevigny, is we are not revisiting all of the facts in the various submissions. If there's a blatant error, then of course, why don't you tell us what those are? But if it's about an interpretation of a fact, then I would appreciate you limiting your comments to just those blatant errors.
Yeah, this is very straightforward, cut and dry. Number 5.
Are we at findings of fact number 5, just to clarify?
Yep. Findings of fact, number 5. And I can read it as required by this condition of approval. The property owner submitted a single grading and drainage plan for both lots to the town engineer. The town engineer approved the submitted plan prior to the issuance of any building permits. It is a fact that there was never a single grading and drainage plan for both lots submitted to the town.
Okay.
It's not in the folder. It's been admitted by the town.
So...
I've talked to the town engineer. I mean, it's a fact.
I think the town engineer is here, correct? Okay. And, and again, I don't, I hesitate to reopen the public hearing here because we need to make those decisions ourselves. But as far as, I'm just trying to find the, I know there was a drainage plan as part of the record here.
It's not a drainage plan.
Okay. So in your view, what was it?
There's a driveway plan for lot, for 21 Longwood Drive.
Okay. So...
And we looked at it in front, in the public.
It's not the entire plan. All we did was...
Yeah. So, Mr. Berry, if you want to address that, please, go ahead.
I don't want to reopen the hearing.
Yes, I understand.
I'm not reopening the hearing, I'm just clarifying what you submitted. All you submitted to us was a driveway grading plan in the title block. We didn't see any plan, but we're...
Oh, I submitted it to Karen, and it's one of the...
No, this is, this is actually submission by you.
Well, I submitted that as part of multiple things. I'd like to see what you have. But I submitted the entire plan to the board.
This is, this is what you submitted to us in your appeal in the last...
In the ZBA appeal, yes.
Last meeting.
Yep. And then as part of my presentation, I showed you all the plan on the big screen as well as, as a, so everyone could see it. It's...
But what, I think what, you did submit those records, and I appreciate that. But I also do recall testimony from the code enforcement officer saying that, in their view, the plans submitted were responsive to the condition of the planning board.
That's an opinion, not a fact. There is a fact, and there's an opinion.
Okay. So I, I'm not going to go back and forth with you on this. I hear what you're saying. You have offered this evidence about what a blatant error is. It's our job to make that determination.
Yes.
Are there others that you have concerns around?
Yep. The property owner applied for and received building permits in accordance with Article 4, Section 2 of the zoning ordinance.
Sorry, which paragraph you went? I just want to make sure I'm following.
6.
Number 6.
Yes.
Findings and facts. So the property owner applied for and received building permits in accordance with Article 4, Section 2 of the zoning ordinance. For 1, there was not a drainage plan, which is part of being in accordance with it. But there's also no plot plan and no actual footprint and coverages within the files. That's a fact. Everyone can look in the files and see that. It's public.
Okay. That's, you put that on the record? And what else are there concerns?
So it said...
And if I may, just at, see clarification on one thing from the attorney, Attorney Katsifakis, when you write, "The property owner applied for and received building permits in accordance with Article 4, Section 2," am I to understand from that 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 is a procedural statement?
That's what it was intended as.
Okay.
And you could simply say that the property owner applied for and received building permits as required by Article 4, Section 2 of the zoning ordinance.
Okay. And I would like to have that amended accordingly to clarify any inconsistencies or concerns in that regard.
I'm just pointing out that the building permits were approved, but they were not in accordance with Article 4, Section 2.
Okay. So we are going to amend that accordingly to say as required by...
Seems to be like a, you know, something that's been going on throughout this whole process. You know, things are being approved without proper documentation.
Yeah, I understand that.
Which is part of my whole case.
I totally understand that. Okay. So what else in these findings do you have concern that are blatantly incorrect?
So the CEO, number 9 of findings and facts, says, "The CEO visited the property on multiple occasions during construction, which included inspection of the house's foundations, footings, framing, electrical, plumbing installations, among other things. The CEO did not notice any material deviation from the approved building permits or planning board approval." So part of the planning board approval was the drainage plan. And on these visits, they had noticed that there was, the road was flooded due to the lack of a drainage plan. And that was a violation of the building permit condition.
I'm just going to stop right there for a moment. I think this, when we say the CEO did not notice, and you said he did notice, I think that that's getting it into an interpretation, which is not something that we want to do.
And that's what they wrote, as a fact.
I'm sorry?
You guys wrote it as a fact.
Right. And we will be deciding whether or not this is a fact. And I understand you object to that.
Okay.
But you've made your objections clear.
Yep. And then number 3 of findings and facts, they reference the planning board's finding of fact, number 14, where it is actually number 4 erosion and number 14 stormwater. So this was, again, a big topic, just wanted it accurate.
I'm sorry, say that again. We're back to findings of fact, second sentence, "The planning board determined in findings of fact, number 14..." You're, you're saying that's the wrong number?
It's number 14 stormwater as well as number 4 erosion. This was, it was on the findings and facts twice.
Okay.
And, yep, here we are.
Does anybody have an objection to that being added?
I assume the sources, I assume the sources of planning board minutes.
Is it, is it the minutes, or is it actually the findings themselves?
It's the actual findings and facts. I'm sure, it was all part of my...
The record.
It, yeah.
There's a, an edited version of the planning board's findings of fact and conclusions of law with Mr. Sevigny's appeal. And on that, it talks, it has both standard 4 and standard 14 on stormwater.
Okay. So it's in the record.
It's in the record.
It's supported by that, and we can do that. Okay. Thank you.
So hopefully you'll consider those.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So with those amendments that we have heard and agreed to, I would entertain a motion to accept those findings of fact as drafted and amended? Oh, Wayne, please.
Just before we move forward on this, is there anything else that anyone else wants to make forward to maybe...
Further to Mr. Berry's question...
One question for the attorneys for the defendant, so to speak. Mr. McCall, you made reference during the hearing earlier in the month that the handrails that formed the third basis of this appeal would be installed. Have they been installed?
Yes.
Okay.
So Mr. Williams, representing Centauri Group LLC, and you representing Mr. Kunkel, are representing to us that that's no longer an issue. Thank you.
So in that respect, then, as far as we were thinking about imposing a condition, it sounds like that is a bit of a moot point at this point. But I don't see that as actually... Excuse me, one sec.
It'll be here.
Yeah. Right. So can we strike then if factually it's no longer necessary? It looks like, and this is in our conclusions piece, not our findings, but, so let's, let's put a pin in that and skip ahead, but with respect to the findings of fact, do we have any additional concerns, edits, additions? Personally, I do not. Mr. Stares, how about you?
No. And I move to confirm those findings as amended.
And just before we do that, and second, do you have any concerns, Wayne?
We have, I have concerns that we have conflicting opinions about what is a, sorry, I have concerns about what is considered a drainage plan. I guess I would like to have that cleared up by the town engineer, because he cited in these findings of fact that having seen and approved the plan.
Yeah. I'm wondering, though, and that's fine, but I think before we do that, it's the code enforcement officer who made the determination, right? That those occupancy permits should issue. And so I know there was testimony from the code enforcement office about their review and satisfaction with respect to those drainage plans, or whatever the records were that you had before you. And so I would like to... And so, I would like to ask those questions, if, and then you can follow up on that. Attorney Katsifakis, does that make sense?
That does. I believe that there was a division of responsibility and that the city's engineer was to, town engineer was to like, take a look at the drainage grading plan, and then the building permit would issue from the CEO, but I'll leave that to the CEO's attorney to discuss.
Okay, so Mr. McCall, would you please address that issue? There you are, yes, thank you.
I agree with Attorney Katsifakis. In the division of responsibility there, the, the condition of approval from the planning board required the town engineer to review the plans, and that, once they had been reviewed, it was the CEO's responsibility, as it is for any other building permit, to issue that permit. Obviously, it's up to the board to decide how to phrase this, but I have, the, the town internally has reviewed the findings of fact, and I have some language that I could suggest for point five, that I think addresses Mr. Sevigny's concerns. And I would just propose it, it, condition five, or finding of fact five, say, instead that the property owner submitted a single grading and drainage plan, and I understand we disagree on what that plan was, but the town proposed a single grading and drainage plan for number 21 Longwood Drive, which is tax map 39, Lot 63, period. The town engineer reviewed this plan, after which the CEO issued the building permits. And I think, I think that clears up any discrepancy about it. The, the town is not stating that a separate plan for both, for each lot was submitted. There was a single plan, it showed number 21, that, that was reviewed by the town engineer prior to the issuance of building permits. And I think that's as, that's as clear a factual scenario as we can, we could state there.
And in my view, that's consistent with the testimony that we've heard. Is that your recollection as well?
I have a specific recollection, actually. And the evidence came from Mr. Paul. He testified that the evidence was that the Lot 15 drainage plan also covered lots 17 and 21, and that the overall project was known informally as 15 Longview. He said there was no additional plan for Lot 17, that, no additional plan for Lot 17 was deemed to be necessary, and that the drainage plan was satisfactory to the code enforcement office. Am I mistaking anything?
No, you're not.
Thank you.
CEO replied.
That was, and I just wanted to put that on the record. So just, I want the record to reflect that Mr. Sarris asked the code enforcement officer if that was in fact his testimony, and he acknowledged that it was in fact his testimony. Okay. So with those changes, and I'm assuming, you know what they say about assuming, but can, can I get clarification that these amendments that we're talking about are being noted? Yes, okay, thank you. So with those changes, um-
Can I say something? Something he said contradicts everything. So, with his amended terminology-
And when you say his, we're talking about Attorney McCall's who just spoke, yes?
Attorney McCall-
No, no, I don't mean it that way. I just want to make sure that's what we're talking about.
Oh, yeah.
This particular amendment.
Yep. What he, what Attorney McCall just said about amending number five to read that the property owner submitted a single drainage plan for Lot 21. And then that was approved by the engineer. And that just proves an outright failure by the town to do what the planning board asked, which is to get a drainage plan for both lots.
So I will say that I understand very clearly that that's your submission. You've made that submission before. I hear that. I understand your concern is that there was a failure on the town, on the town's part to ensure that that drainage plan did what it was supposed to do. So I, I get that, I understand that, you've made that submission. But as far as the factual finding, from my part, I, I'm not saying that there wasn't, that your concerns aren't legitimate. I'm saying from a factual standpoint, and what is written here, as far as that is a just clean factual recitation, and I, I don't have a problem with it. I'm looking to my fellow board members.
No, I think we-
Okay.
I think we're gonna address this when we get to the conclusions.
Yes.
And what Mr. Sarris just asked of the CEO, Brian Paul, about a drainage plan for Lot 15, there never was one.
But I don't think that's in dispute.
No, but that's what they used to say that they could approve 17 and 21.
And I understand that that's your submission.
And that, but that never existed.
I think we understand the point and your arguments, but we need to move on, okay?
Right. You're just using facts and findings that aren't true and making it part of the record. It's just disconcerning.
I understand it's disconcerning to you, but we're trying to do our job as we see fit.
Yep.
Okay. All right, so with those amendments, or revisions, I should say, to the findings of fact as drafted, I think, I heard a motion from Mr. Sarris? Do I have a second?
Second.
So all in favor of the motion to approve the findings of fact as amended? May I see, so, Mr.?
One.
Actually, we don't need to do it, it's not remote anymore.
We're all here.
We're all here, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have a three to zero motion carries with respect to approval of the findings of fact as amended. Now we're moving on to the conclusions of law. And the first few are, is it fair to say, Attorney Katsifakis, are sort of the threshold issues with respect to those things that we need to show in order to have jurisdiction?
That is correct. One through, one through five really are just threshold determinations that you could group together.
And I have read these and reviewed them, and I am in agreement. I, I did have one question, if you could clarify, because I know this was an important issue with respect to this appeal, is we're talking about number three, the timeliness of the appeal, and I know that some concern was expressed that this is, in essence, a bootstrapped, untimely appeal of the building permit. So if you could just address procedurally that issue, I'd appreciate it.
What I'm trying to say here, it, it goes to jurisdiction as well. You have the jurisdiction to hear the appeal. It was a timely appeal, but what it is seeking to do is beyond the board's ability to grant. And it is beyond the board's authority to go back and rehear something for which an appeal period has already passed, and no appeal was ever filed. So it's, it's a timely appeal in and of itself from the certificate of occupancy. It's a, you have jurisdiction to hear appeals from a certificate of occupancy, but you cannot grant an appeal that seeks to undermine some other permit.
Thank you for that clarification. And so with that explanation, with respect to the sort of procedural and threshold jurisdictional questions, one through six, excuse me, one through five, are we okay with those?
I think the point that was being made is, isn't, this is, this is not a bootstrap appeal of a building permit. It's actually goes back further than that. It's the approval of the final re-subdivision plan on August the 9th of 2021 by the planning board.
But by either account, whether it's the planning board or those building permits that resulted therefrom, those were, would have been the time to be stating the objection? Is that my understanding of what you're?
Yes, but I don't think, I, I also noted that Mr. Sevigny's contract to buy his current residence was November of 2021, and that would have been beyond the appeal period for the planning commission's, a review of the planning commission's decision. So he couldn't have filed an appeal of that decision, because he had no right title or interest in the property at issue.
But when it was time for the building permits coming along, I think chronologically, he would have had that right title and interest to do so then. Wayne, do you have any comments on those first five?
No.
Okay. Moving on to number six, just before we get into the substance of that, I noted a little typo on sub two, where the property owner's alleged failure to sufficiently replant trees on the property that were removed. If we can just note that. But as with-
Excuse me, Leah, while we're there, in number five, there's a duplicative, does not, just prior to the Stewart versus Town of Cedric reference.
Got it.
Do you need to delete that as well?
Yes, please. Thank you.
I think that was exposed.
Okay, and so with respect to the recitation of the three core issues as, which give grounds for the appeal, I think those are accurate. Do you, do you agree?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so now number seven, I think, is getting into the issues of their certificate of occupancy, and those issues that we were talking about is that I had asked, just with respect to the timeliness issue. And so with that explanation from Attorney Katsifakis, I think that I am perfectly in agreement with number seven. I just want to make sure my fellow board members are. Mr. Berry?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay. So with respect to number eight, and I think this is where we're kind of getting into the meat and potatoes of, of the, of the essence of the appeal, I think, I'm just gonna read this off, because I think it's important. So with respect to finding number eight, I shouldn't say finding, this is a conclusion. "As to the first issue of stormwater runoff that under statutory provision cited, the property owner has used his land in a way that unreasonably alters the flow of surface water and has interfered with the reasonableness of the applicant's land, creating a private nuisance." So one of the grounds of Mr. Sevigny's appeal was that there is a statutory provision that precludes this kind of activity. So I think the question arose in our mind was, okay, that may very well be the case. Is that something, as a Board of Appeals, that we have jurisdiction to consider? Because as we say this a lot, you know, municipal boards are creatures of statute, and we can only exercise that authority that we are specifically given. And I wanted, I think we asked already the attorney to address this issue, but just for clarification, I think it's fair to say that we do not have authority to make decisions, nor are we the arbiters over private nuisances. Is that a fair statement?
That's a fair statement. Private real estate matters are not within the jurisdiction of this board, but of the courts. There's just a very limited situation when the question is whether the person has the right to use the property in the way sought, where you might look at what, the extent of an easement or extent of conditions. That's not present here, that's not a concern.
And I, I think, just from my perspective, I want to make clear to the applicant, and also just members of the public, this is not to say that, that this board doesn't have compassion, or is, is, you know, immune to the fact that there may very well be drainage issues that cause frustration here. It's just, we are mindful of our jurisdiction and the things that we can and cannot do. And so with respect to that issue about the private nuisance issue, we're making no findings in that regard, because we can't. And we can't base our decision on that. So at least that's my perspective, and I look to my fellow board members to weigh in, if they have any other comments in that regard.
Speaking for myself, Mr. Sevigny, I fully sympathize with your situation and your wife's situation. From my own personal experience, we had a neighbor who built a huge garage right on our property line, and it diverted water onto our property, and it eroded foundations for a building that we had put there about one year earlier, and it caused a tremendous amount of damage. Unfortunately, we didn't appeal the necessary building permits in time, and we found ourselves in precisely the situation that you're in. So I, my heart goes out to you, but that, that doesn't make a difference to what, the decision that we have to reach.
But there is one major difference enough.
Yeah, I, I think that we really can't be getting back and forth. The public hearing is closed, the submissions have been made, and we need to be making our decisions based on the evidence that we heard. Okay? Yes, we do. So on that basis, oh, Mr. Berry?
I would just refer back to item number seven in our conclusions for the, that cannot be used as a substitute for an appeal from an underlying permit.
Yes. Yeah, can we hear, I, I, I just, I'm not sure, is, is, your mic is on? I just couldn't, okay.
You might have to move closer.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that your comments were heard. Can you just repeat those, if you wouldn't mind? It's hard to hear.
I'm just referring back to paragraph number seven in the conclusions that Jim Katsifakis wrote, that Supreme Court case, DeFossis versus City of Saco, where an appeal like this cannot be used as a substitute for an appeal from an underlying permit. And I'm referring to the, with the reference he makes to the planning board permit.
Mm-hmm.
Re-subdivision.
Understood. And, and, and I think, sort of picking up on that notion of this procedural, what we can and what we cannot do as, as board members here, zoning board of appeals, this is also looking at paragraph eight, where we're talking about how, you know, certificates of occupancy are related really only to compliance with MUBEC, and when I say that, that's the main Uniform Building Code, right? When the code enforcement officer is making the determination of whether or not to issue those certificates of occupancy, as I understand it, again, we all talk about who's limited, right? And, and the code officer, as I understand it procedurally, is limited by, okay, is, we have building permits, and we, we had a building permit. And when you're analyzing the certificate of occupancy, it is, has that structure been built in compliance with the building permit application and MUBEC? And that's really the, the analysis. And I note that that is what Mr., I should say Attorney Katsifakis has said in paragraph eight. Am I interpreting that correctly?
You are.
Okay. And so, again, we don't have the authority to determine private nuisance claims, and we don't have the authority to, I mean, our job is to determine whether or not the code enforcement officer erred in issuing those occupancy permits. And again, when we do that, we need to be mindful of what the scope of his job was in that regard. And so, in that regard, I agree with the comments and conclusions as drafted, number eight. Looking to my fellow board members, if they have any additional comments in that regard.
I agree as well.
I agree with paragraph eight as well.
Okay, and, and again, there's that paragraph, and I know this is a, a serious frustration from Mr. Sevigny about the drainage plan. But I'm reading this provision, because I think it's really important. And the conclusion here is that moreover, to the extent the applicant argues that the Board of Appeals, before the Board of Appeals, excuse me, that the grading and drainage plan submitted in support of the building permit application was insufficient and inadequate to comply with the re-subdivision stormwater condition of approval, the applicant failed to appeal from the issuance of the building permit, or in fact, the planning board approval. And this appeal cannot be used as a substitute for such appeal. And I think that really is the essence of our conclusion here, because with respect to that drainage plan, whether or not it was sufficient, you know, we, we can't make a determination on that, because that issue is time barred. Any other comments in that regard? Okay, so I think, moving on to that second issue on appeal, was with respect to the trees and the replanting of the trees, you know, there was, as we understand it, there were enforcement proceedings by the code enforcement office in that regard. I don't think- Just one moment, if, let me just finish. You know, I, I think that nobody's disputing that there was violations in that regard. And again, this is basically a question of what authority do we have as a board? And can we sort of poke into the enforcement decisions of the town? And my understanding is that we cannot. But Mr. Sevigny, you have a comment?
You just read the conclusions that the attorney had made, based on-
Well, I, I do want to clarify that. The attorney hasn't made any conclusions. He is offering-
His draft.
Correct, yeah.
And he was touching upon the cases that I had brought up. But he did not touch upon all the cases, or all of the information that I had provided. And I was wondering why that was. It, it's, it's like he picked and chose, and that the cases that really kind of form a reason why you guys really should make an opinion were not brought up.
Okay, so I, I have these cases in front of us. You know, again, we do rely to a certain extent on our, our attorney to do the legal analysis, but, you know, I, I've read these cases, I'm familiar with some of these cases, and I feel that they are myself distinguishable. But, you know, I, I don't want to go too far afield into this, this isn't a court of law, but what I would do is, I will defer to the town attorney, if, if you want to address that issue.
Well, these were the two cases that were cited in Mr. Sevigny's testimony before the board, so I followed up on those. You know, I've read some of these others too, but I, you know, we, I followed up on the two cases that were- the two cases that were mentioned specifically to this board.
Okay. So in that regard, you know, I, again, you do absolutely have a right to appeal if you feel that there's been either legal error that has been committed for failure to consider those adequately, then that is part of your absolute right. And so we have this, these cases, I've looked at them myself. You know, I just think that you've had your opportunity, you've made your case, and, you know, we can't keep reopening it.
I was just very surprised you didn't bring up the Bracket versus Rangeli case.
Well-
Because it fits and it totally proves that you can make a decision on this.
So if, I hear you, that's your interpretation. I don't want to get into too much case law, but I will tell you my perspective on the Bracket and Rangeli case. I want to ask the town attorney on that. My understanding of that case was with respect to good cause exceptions, right? And that in that case, it was, okay, the appeal is untimely. In that case, I think we had a situation where, and I could have this wrong, but my recollection of that case is that folks were out of town, it was a building permit, they didn't see it. In my view, I don't know if my colleagues share this view, but that is distinguishable because here, my understanding in the record, evidence supports the conclusion that you were in constant contact with the code office and the town. And so the basis for a good cause exception is very distinguishable. But I'll defer again to the town attorney in that regard.
No, I'll agree. That goes back to Ganda versus Lewiston Crush Stone, the series of law court opinions, allowing for a good cause exception in filing an appeal to the Board of Appeals where you could not have reasonably known, and when you did find out, you immediately filed an appeal. That's not the case here. Those cases are distinguishable. These cases, Rickert and Toussaint, are distinguishable because they are CEO enforcement question, where the question was actually appealed to the CEO. All that was appealed here were the certificate of occupancy issuances. That's it. It wasn't an enforcement matter that was appealed to the CEO or a non-enforcement matter as it was in those cases. This is a different situation.
Again, I disagree because I told, I asked the CEO whether or not a drainage plan was done, and he told me yes. It's on file. When I went to go hit the file, no one could find it at the town hall.
So-
So once I figured out that it was the wrong drainage plan, yeah.
Okay. Mr. Sevigny, we are revisiting things that you have said in your, and this, the public hearing is closed.
Yeah. I was just surprised that the attorney didn't take the things that I brought up.
And you've made that point. We have responded to it, and I think we need to continue on. Thank you. Okay. So we are, where are we? Okay, we're moving on to paragraph or finding, no, conclusion number nine with respect to the replanting of the trees. And we, this accounts for the code enforcement's testimony that an issue of notice, excuse me, a notice of violation was issued. We heard testimony about what the replanting was. Again, reasonable minds can differ as to whether or not it was appropriate. We could absolutely disagree whether it was appropriate. But again, my understanding of the law is that we do not have the authority to get involved in enforcement decisions. And so from my perspective, as drafted, number nine is correct. I agree with it. And I look to my colleagues about their feelings in this regard, or their conclusions, I should say.
I don't think the board has jurisdiction over an enforcement issue. This board doesn't have jurisdiction.
I agree with that.
Okay. So with respect to number nine, does anybody have any concerns or revisions or additions that they'd like to see? Okay. So moving on to paragraph 10, and this is with respect to the issue of the handrails. Again, I think we've heard subsequent testimony tonight that this is rectified. 100%? Can I, I'm looking at, I'm looking at Matt Williams back there. Are you representing that this has been done? And-
Yes.
And I see the code officer is representative.
I confirm that with the code officer.
Okay, okay. So this does not seem to be an issue. Again, I look to the town attorney in this regard. We don't need to impose any conditions if we have representation. And I guess I'd ask, you know, Mr. Sevigny, have you seen this? Has it been installed?
I've seen them. I don't know if they're installed to code.
Okay. So you've seen them? And I am understood. Okay. So I'm looking at the code officer who's nodding that they've been installed to code.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So in that regard, I think it can be amended in that way?
Certainly. You could either, you know, Mr. Sevigny could withdraw the issue if it's been resolved, but if he won't, then it would be, the board could say that on hearing from the parties, the board understands that the issue now is moot and declines to, to, to address the appeal on this matter.
Yeah. And so I do look to you, Mr. Sevigny, do you wish to withdraw this? And if you don't, you certainly don't have to, and we can proceed accordingly. Okay, thank you. Okay. So in that regard, I think I would simply just adopt the amendments that Attorney Katsifakis suggested. And that's my inclination. I'm looking again to my fellow board members if they agree with that approach.
Yes.
I think we need to recognize that when the appeal was filed by Mr. Sevigny, that he was correct in the fact that there were no handrails.
Certainly.
So I don't know how this board wants to handle that and saying that, yes, there were no handrails, it was incorrect in issuing a certificate of occupancy, but now that the handrails have been, now that the handrails have been installed, that is a moot point in whether-
Yeah, I think, I think so. As drafted, we can go with it and then sort of take up from where it says therefore. So why don't we just go through that exercise, okay? Number 10, as to the third issue, Attorney McCall concedes that this issue regarding the requirement of handrails is a proper subject for appeal. The certificates are issued by the CEO in accordance and compliance with MUBEC, which has standards requiring certain handrails. The CEOs, I think it should be just CEO, recognizes that the handrail should be installed and has, well, there were two CEOs, weren't there? Okay, my apologies.
A confusing point.
Yeah. Have no objection to reissuing the certificates with the condition that the handrails be installed. And I think we would say therefore, the board concludes that the CEOs did air in approving the certificates. However, based on testimony received at this evening's, you know, the March 30 hearing, that the handrails have been properly installed, this grounds of appeal has been rendered moot and we make no conclusion in that regard. Does that feel better and more accurate? And so before we make a motion, I just want to look to the ultimate conclusions under 11. 11A affirms the code enforcement officers' issuance of the certificates with regard to the first and second core issues of the applicant's appeal, stormwater onto the applicant's property and the property owner's replanting of trees. That seems to be a fair and accurate summation. Are you okay with A? Mr. Berry, you all right with that?
I guess I would prefer to see that the ZBA doesn't have authority to hear these two, the two first, the first two points, first and second core issues.
I see what you're saying. So affirms the CEOs. I think though, that it is accurate to say that we affirm the CEO's issuance because we're finding no error in that regard, right?
Correct. But also that we have no jurisdiction over those two core issues and that's the reason we're not.
Fair enough. Is that-
You have jurisdiction to hear the appeal, but not jurisdiction to grant the relief requested. If that makes sense.
It makes perfect sense. So moving on, as to the third core issue of the appeal, lack of handrail required by MUBEC modifies the CEO's January 11 to 2023 certificates only to the extent that the CEOs, hmm, well, we don't want to say that. We're going to say as to the third issue of appeal, lack of handrail, why don't we say that we, I think we-
Determine the issues.
See, adopts this decision, findings and conclusions of law, and that it's implied to say as amended by us this evening and authorizes the chair to sign. So I think from my perspective, as amended, those seem to be appropriate and inaccurate. Karen, do you have a concern? Sure. It's in, it's in the, when you say it, I just want to make sure we're- The final conclusions? Yeah. Actually, Jim, did you take your pen to paper on that one?
Let me see if I can walk us through it.
Thank you.
So where, it would be under 11 we're talking about, correct?
Yes, A.
Okay. A affirms the CEO's issuance of the certificates with regard to the first and second core issues of the appellant's appeal, applicant's appeal. As to the third core issue-
But hold on one sec, Jim, because I think our conclusion was because we don't have jurisdiction to hear those issues, right?
Alright. Affirms the CEO's-
We have jurisdiction to hear the appeal, but we don't have jurisdiction over the subject.
Jurisdiction to grant the relief, to grant the relief requested.
Did you still have concern? Yep, I think I got that. While the board has jurisdiction to hear the appeal, it does not have jurisdiction to grant the relief requested.
Okay.
Perfect.
You've got it.
And with respect to B?
As to the third core issue of the appeal, lack of handrail requested by MUBEC, this issue is moot. The board determines this issue is moot, period, and you leave off the rest of it. Because you already explained in 10 that the handrails have been installed.
And then the other two are, I think, perfectly appropriate and don't require amendment. Do you agree? B and C and D, I should say.
Yes. I also think that we should explain why it's moot, and that is because of the representations received today that the handrails have been installed in accordance with the applicable
Yep.
That's fine.
Okay. So I think that we need a motion.
Can I ask the attorney a quick question?
No.
If it's procedural-
It's somewhat procedural and has, yeah, about whether or not you can make a decision on this.
Whether we can make a decision on this?
Yep. Whether or not you can, your, what you just read said that you can't decide on issues one and two.
I can't answer that question. We can decide issues one and two. What we're saying is we have the jurisdiction to make a decision. We cannot grant you the relief that has been requested for all of the reasons we've already discussed.
It seems like a simple taken this.
Okay. So I will say this. You know, we haven't formalized our decision. I think we all know where that's going, we'll make our final motions. But it's very important for you to understand that procedurally and with respect to due process, that you've had your opportunity to make your submissions with respect to fact, procedure. And if ultimately you disagree with anything that we have to say, then you have your right to appeal. And, but at this point, I think we have to just, we have closed the public hearing, we've sort of given, I think, quite a bit of leeway in that regard, but unless you have some due process concern, I think we need to wrap it up. Okay. So I think we need to entertain a motion with respect to our final conclusion in this
I move that the board ratifies the conclusions of law as amended and that the appeal noted by the appellant should be dismissed.
Can I make a little, just say denied rather than dismissed? Is that okay to amend that motion?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. So I, we've heard the motion. Can I have a second? All in favor? Thank you. And so just procedurally speaking, again, my understanding is that these revisions will be made and I have been authorized to sign. And Karen, you can just let me know when they're ready to come. I will come and sign them. They will be sent to you, Mr. Sevigny. And, you know, right here on the decision, it notifies you of your appeal rights. And, you know, I, as said before by several of us on the board, we appreciate the frustrations and it's not that, you know, we're making any conclusions with respect to the underlying concerns, it's just simply with respect to our jurisdiction of what we can and cannot do. And so with that, you have, you know, you'll have your written findings and you can appeal them in the due court, you know, in due course if you so choose. Okay? And with that, I think that concludes this particular order of business. We do have some other orders, oh, yeah, we do have some other matters on our agenda. So without further ado, I'm just going to move forward on those. We have our minutes, but also we have, just give me one second, there's other business that, I have one issue to discuss. I'm not sure, do any board members have anything else that they want to raise? Mr. Berry, do you have anything else? Okay. So we do have a concern about one of our board members in the sense that I think he's been a board member for a couple of years. We haven't seen any attendance, he hasn't attended, and under the town charter, I can cite the provision, there is a forfeiture provision that basically says appointees to any board or commission shall forfeit if they basically fail to attend the greater of three consecutive regular meetings or more than 25% of all meetings with any, within any six-month period of time. And so we have a member, Mr. James Atwood, who falls within that category. And so I've reached out to the town manager and asked that the Board of Selectmen attend to this. As you can see, we're a five-member board, there's only three of us, quorum can become an issue. And so we're going to, at least I would like to make a motion or get a motion that we can make a formal request from, to the Board of Selectmen to fill that position and appoint somebody else so that we can have, if not a fully populated board, you know, enough that we won't be scrambling for quorum every time we need to meet.
So moved.
Agreed.
Okay, thank you. So we've got a motion and a second, and I'll take a vote. All in favor? Thank you. And I think that's it as far as other business, except we need to look at our minutes. And is there something else, Mr. Sevigny?
I gave a couple of very minor typos and spacing errors to Mr.-
Okay. Mr. Berry, did you have anything?
I had nothing, thank you.
Okay. And I did have one little thing that, if you'll indulge me one minute. I think it was with respect to, if you can just bear with me. One second. I think it was actually with respect to a comment. Okay. So I'm at page five and it's in the middle. It's with respect, it starts with L. Rachin asked if enforcement matters were also outside of the purview. And then the second to last sentence says that however, the enforcement was not a matter for ZBA involvement, Katsifakis insisted anew. And I know this is probably me just being silly, but I think that our counsel is not an advocate, and I don't think insist is a word we should be using, and so I would say advised or informed us. I think we just want to edit that. And that was the only little thing that I had, aside from a few typos, but it sounds like you've stated that. Stated, perfect. Can we amend that to stated? Any other amendments?
No.
Okay. So I didn't entertain a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Thanks. Any other matters of business that we should be thinking about before we take the most important motion of all? Okay. So can we have that motion?
I move to adjutant.
All right. Second? All in favor? Thank you. And so this concludes our meeting of March 30th, the zoning Board of Appeals. Thank you so much, everybody.